Oh, uh, testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Is that good? Hello? Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Lord, we just lift up this time that you will be blessed. People will hear the truth.
And that my ca- the camera makes my stomach look flatter. And now it's round. Good to go? Okay. So, uh, thank you for everybody for coming. This is in regards, uh, to the, uh, alleged fraud. Criminal fraud took place in this, uh, primary election in the city of Warren on Tuesday, the eighth of August, two thousand twenty-three, particularly in the fifth council district in the city of Warren. So I have filed a criminal complaint for damages, uh, superintending control order and injunctive relief initially with the thirty-seventh district court. I was advised by that court that the, uh, amount, uh, that I'm requesting in damages exceeds the limit of the court, which was twenty-five thousand. Uh, so that had to be moved, uh, into the sixteenth judicial circuit court, which is McComb County. The amount of the damages, um, is approximately one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents, or the equivalent of being four years in the upcoming council, given the adjustment for the increase in pay for the council members for the next four years. It was approved, um, by the commission that approves for the pay increases for the council members and also the other elected officials in the city of Warren. That does not include the, uh, court costs, uh, the filing fees and, uh, for having to provide service upon the candidates, uh, the Warren Election Commission, and that also of the city of Warren clerk. So to go over this real quick, uh, the order that's being appealed is the order of the City of Warren Election Commission that was made on the twenty-sixth of May, when they indicated that they would not handle any challenge hearings to candidates that would be on the, uh, Tuesday, eighth August, two thousand twenty-three primary ballot. This civil complaint for damages, superintending control order and injunctive relief is timely and is taken within twenty days of the unofficial, uh, results of the primary election, updated on Wednesday, the ninth of August, two thousand twenty-three, at zero nine thirty-seven hours A.M. As the plaintiff appellate, which is me, is aggrieved by the final decision and order of the tribunal body on Friday, the twenty-sixth of May, two thousand twenty-three. Appeals the decision and order by, to the district court by filing this petition and an order of superintending control within twenty days from the date of the primary election. As I said, this had to be changed from the district court over to the circuit court because of the many damages involved. This has to do with several points, um, in the order being appealed. There is no alternative recourse to challenge the tribunal's, uh, body's decision, and this is the only adequate remedy to compel the district court, or in this case, now the circuit court, to take action or make a decision. So the allegations of error. This case presents an issue of first impressions involving interpretation and application of the city charter of Warren. Sections primarily, uh, seven point one-one, Department of the City Clerk, uh, sections number seven and nine on page forty, and City Charter, uh, City Charter of Warren, section thirteen point one-one, Election Commission Duties, page eighty-five, and section thirteen point one-two, Meeting and Quorum, page eighty-five, and section thirteen point one-five, General Powers and Duties, page eighty-six, and, uh, section seven on page eighty-seven, and section two point six, Penalties for Violation of the Charter, on page eleven. The defendants, appellees, City of Warren Clerk and the City of Warren Election Commission, misapplied in the reviewing of the City of Warren Charter, Sections at their personal discretion, inconsistent with the controlling precedent of the City Charter of Warren. Defendants, appellees, City of Warren, City of Clerk, and City of Warren Election Commission, number one, failed to comply with the controlling City of Charter of Warren precedent. The charter I'm referring to is this little red book here. Basically, this is the Bible in the city of Warren of everything that is supposed to be done in city government. Everything that the council is supposed to do, everything that City Clerk, the different commissions, the mayor, and the treasurer. This applies to everything in the city of Warren. This is our constitution, and we're supposed to follow it. This has to do also with our elections. This is for a municipal election, and this book decides who is eligible and who is qualified to run for elections in the city of Warren. The state constitution also provides for remedies for those that are felons in the state of Michigan that had their convictions over twenty years. They are allowed to be on the ballot. Anybody under twenty years, they're not allowed to be on the ballot. So that's consistent also with the state law, not only with only our charter. They failed to make complaint and to prosecute any person whom the commission shall, and that's an important word, shall. That is used readily here in every piece of legislation in the state of Michigan, shall. Does not allow for discretion. It means you have to do this. It shall be done. Have good cause to believe that has been guilty of a violation of the election laws. So if you're an ineligible and unqualified candidate, you violated the election laws in the city of Warren. If you have not done your job as an elected official, i.e. the clerk and the election commission on the city of Warren, you've also violated election laws. If you signed a statement of attestation saying that you are an eligible and qualified candidate to be on the ballot, you have indeed said that you are truly a eligible and qualified candidate, even if you're ineligible and unqualified, and you violated election laws. Signed a statement of attestation. That statement of attestation has a penalty of perjury. It's a felony. In the state of Michigan, it's a felony. It's a one-thousand-dollar fine, and it's five years imprisonment. They failed to take action upon timely and lawfully submitted corresponding evidence obtained by myself and independently verified from an online private investigation firm, checkpeople.com, that conducts background checks utilizing criminal and public record database sources. So checkpeople.com, not only does investigations for background and criminal checks, but they also are readily used by employers to make sure that they have a qualified candidate for employment that doesn't have a criminal record, and also to verify whether or not, uh, they have any other, uh, gigs that would not allow them to be employed for an employer. Other municipalities use them as well. It's readily available on their website, that they're highly rated, and their information that they obtain is beyond reproach. They failed to remove candidates Henry Noonan, Brittany Tringali, and J. Michael Jackson, all as ineligible and unqualified from the Tuesday, eighth August, two thousand twenty-three primary election ballot in the city of Warren. They failed to certify that, as the plaintiff appellate, Eddie Kabisinski, as the only remaining candidate that was eligible and qualified per the City Charter of Warren, Chapter Four, Officers, Section four point two, Eligibility for City Office, General Qualifications, page nineteen, and Section four point three, A and B, Certain Persons Ineligible for City Office, page nineteen, for the council in the fifth district in the city of Warren. Again, referring to eligibility and qualifications in the city charter. This is what our elections are based on, the city charter. They failed to enforce the city charter. They failed to do the duties of the city charter. This is for a municipal election. Every one of these council positions is a municipal election. The clerk is a municipal election. The treasurer is a municipal election, and so is the mayor. The state might have other requirements for eligibility and qualifications for other offices at the county and state level, but our charter, our Bible, our constitution for the city says what our rules and regulations are for our elected officials. And every one of these candidates that was on the ballot for the fifth district was ineligible and not qualified. The three individuals I just named here were the ones that surpassed on the ballot in this recent election. So that means that I would win the election with three hundred and fifty-nine votes as the only eligible candidate. That's exactly what that means, because the other three candidates are ineligible, and they're not qualified to be on the ballot. They should have never been allowed to have been voted upon, but because the clerk and the Warren Election Commission failed to do their plenary power job, that's what this is all about. They had the plenary power to do, conduct the investigation, to prosecute, and they did not do that. They failed in their job. They violated my right to have a legal opportunity for a public hearing concerning the candidate challenges was not afforded, and they canceled the hearings for the ineligible and unqualified candidate challenges. So I was not the only one that brought up candidate challenges. There were other candidates, other elected officials in the city of Warren that requested hearings, that presented evidence to not only the clerk, but the Warren Election Commission. Now, in this case, as I had indicated on my letter of the Tuesday, the twenty-third of May, two thousand twenty-three, in this case, Mr. Ethan Vincent is a city attorney. He is also a member of the City Election Commission. The evidence intake attorney would have been Mary Michaels, the deputy city attorney, and she was provided with copies of the evidence. Now, concerning another candidate, uh, which the information was redacted, and it's not part of this lawsuit, the information had to go directly to the city attorney's office because, according to checkpeople.com, they could only give that information to a licensed attorney and not to myself. That information was sent to the city attorney's office, both of Mr. Vincent and Ms. Michaels, via email, and it was unredacted concerning another candidate, which is not a part of this lawsuit. So I did everything proper and correct per our city charter as a result of challenging these candidates. Problem here is there are those in the administration, in city elected office, did not do their job according to the charter, and that's what this lawsuit is about, and allowed a fraud to be perpetrated upon the good and decent people of the fifth council district, and possibly other council districts within the city of Warren, having to do with other elections. I'm primarily concerned about the election in which I was in. I want to go on with, um, the results of the election. On Wednesday, the ninth of August, two thousand twenty-three, at zero nine thirty-seven hours A.M., the unofficial results of the primary election, updated for the fifth district council in the city of Warren, with candidate Henry Noonan in the first place, candidate Brittany Tringali in second place, candidate J. Michael Jackson in third place, and myself in fourth place. This action constitutes a criminal fraud that has been perpetrated upon the good and decent people of the fifth council district for the city of Warren, having ineligible and unqualified candidates voted upon in the primary ballot. Now I will go into exactly why this, uh, item has been brought to the court. So on Tuesday, the thirtieth of May, two thousand twenty-three, the, I filed a criminal complaint report, number twenty-three, zero, zero, two, nine, seven, five, seven, with the city of Warren Department of Police at approximately fourteen twenty-nine hours P.M. as a result of the criminal actions by the defendant appellate, City of Warren Clerk, for the city char-, uh, City of Warren, Section, uh, seven point one-one, Department of City Clerk, seven and nine, page forty, City Charter of Warren, Sections thirteen point one-one, Election Commission Duties, page eighty-five, and Section thirteen point one-two, Meeting and Quorum, page eighty-five, and Section thirteen point one-five, General Powers and Duties, Section number three, on page eighty-six, and Section seven, on page eighty-seven, and the City of, uh, Charter of Warren, Chapter number four, Officers, Section four point three, A, Certain Persons Ineligible for City Office, on page nineteen, and violated the City Charter of Warren for these actions, which penalties are provided for in Section two point six, page eleven. Defendant appellate, the City of Warren Clerk, also violated MCL seven fifty point five oh five, and signed the statement of attestation concerning the affidavit and identity and receipt of filing, Section number three, Certification and Acknowledgement. By, by signing, I acknowledge that making a false statement in this affidavit is perjury, a felony punishable by up to a fine of one thousand dollars or imprisonment for five years, and may result in disqualification from the ballot. So how does this apply to Ms. Bufo? Well, Ms. Bufo violated election laws. She did not do her job as the city clerk. She also did not do her job as the chairman of the Warren Election Commission. She did not investigate. She did not prosecute ineligible and unqualified candidates on this ballot. It specifically says "shall." That means she has to do it. She can't think about, can't say, "No, I'll think about and see if I want to do it," or "I'm going to use discretion." No, it says "shall." Something you have to do. They canceled the hearings for the ineligible and unqualified candidate challenges, even though it says "shall." I issued the letter of memorandum, as I said, on the twenty-third of May, in regards to this. I submitted the timely issued evidence. They ignored it. They didn't respond in any way, shape, or form to my letter. They did not have any scheduled hearings and decided to cancel any further hearings and conduct any investigation and prosecute anybody for being ineligible and unqualified on this ballot. In regards to Mr. Noonan, he also signed a statement of attestation. I'm not going to reread that. I read it once. How does this apply? How is he unqualified? How is he non-eligible candidate? On Thursday, the sixth of April, two thousand twenty-three, public record search provides that the twenty-seven, one, five, six, Gale Drive, Warren, McComb County, Michigan, four, eight, zero, nine, three, address, for the defendant appellate, candidate Henry Loring Noonan, residency ceased. Public record search provides that the twenty-seven, one, five, six, Gale Drive, Warren, McComb County, Michigan, four, eight, zero, nine, three, address, was a personal a- asset sold for ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars. The birthdate was listed as the eighteenth of September, nineteen fifty-six. That confirms that it was Mr. Noonan, because that's the date of birth that he put on his statement of attestation, statement of identity, to run for election in the city of Warren. So that confirms that this sale was per him, per the birthday. Public record search provides that the defendant appellate candidate Henry Loring Noonan, primary homestead property tax residency is for an address of eleven, twenty-eight, North Blair Avenue, Royal Oak, Oakland County, Michigan, four, eight, zero, six, seven, as a current residency. If you live in Royal Oak, if you live in Oakland County, not a Warren resident, that's pretty plain to see. Now, there might be a stipulation, and it says you must be an elector within the city of Warren for at least the last two years. Well, that's fine, but if Mr. Noonan is given this position, he also has to be removed from it once he is given it, because he no longer has residency within the fifth council district. So in either case, either residency, or now he's moved after he was duly elected, he can't hold the position, because he doesn't live in Warren. It's not his primary residence. The Blair Drive address, per the information of checkpeople.com, which is, what is it, you usually call it? Competent authority? They are competent authority. That's Fred's word. He likes that. Likes that phrase. So let's go on here to, um, Ms. Brittany. And I only say the, the name Ms. Brittany because of the twenty different aliases that are assigned to this young woman. I'll get into that later. So on, uh, Thursday, the twentieth of April, two thousand twenty-three, defendant appellate candidate Brittany Nicole Tringali, is the current name she's using right now, signed a statement of attestation concerning Section Three, Certification and Acknowledgement. Again, I'm not going to reread that, but making a false statement, saying that you're ineligible and qualified candidate is a violation of election laws, is a felony punishable by up to a thousand-dollar fine and five years imprisonment. Another felony for Ms. Brittany. She can add that to the collection. So, uh, a public record search for defendant appellate candidate Brittany Nicole Tringali fines for felony criminal convictions in the state of Michigan under the alias of Brittany Kilimzak. I hope I'm saying that correct. Brittany Kilimzak, K-L-I-M-C-Z-A-K, for felony assaulting, resisting, obstructing a police officer with a weapon attempted on the ninth of February, two thousand seventeen, felony retail fraud, second degree, over two hundred dollars, on the twenty-fourth of January, two thousand seventeen, and for MCL three, 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 point, seven, two, one, four, narcotic drugs, public health code, public act three sixty-eight of nineteen seventy-eight, and MCL seven fifty point four, four, eight, through, MCL seven fifty point four, four, nine, eight, prostitution in the city of Detroit, County of Wayne, Third Judicial Court Case Numbers, uh, two thousand seventeen hyphen zero, zero, one, one, zero, six, dash, zero, one, F.H., two thousand seventeen hyphen zero, zero, one, one, zero, six, dash, zero, two, F.H., and two thousand seventeen zero, zero, one, one, zero, six, hyphen, zero, three, F.H. All felonies under twenty years, two thousand seventeen, right? So if it was, any criminal conviction since two thousand oh three would be considered since we're in two thousand twenty-three. That would be the cutoff. Anything older than two thousand and three cannot be considered, so we can all agree that two thousand seventeen is within that time period of two thousand and three and two thousand twenty-three. Public record search also of, uh, Ms. Tringali provides for additional criminal convictions in the state of North Carolina under the alias of Brittany Lane for public health crimes, that's what they call it, public health crimes, involving narcotics or prostitution on the following dates, nine October, two thousand fifteen, twenty-nine September, two thousand twelve, first of June, two thousand twelve, and the twenty-fourth of January, two thousand ten. I'm sorry. And, uh, let's go on here to, uh, state of Virginia. Same thing, public health crimes involving narcotics and prostitution on the twenty-third of May, two thousand nineteen, seventh of May, two thousand nineteen, nineteenth of Sept- September, two thousand and seven, and the fifteenth of September, two thousand and seven. Now, as I said, there were many aliases, uh, for, uh, Ms. Brittany here. All of them have to do with the last name of Tringali, uh, Tringali, Kilimzak, Kilimzak, Tringali, um, variations on the Kilimzak spelling, uh, missing letters here and there, and also hyphenated with the Mills name and also the Lane surname attached. I have those documents. I have submitted them to certain media groups. Anybody that wants to see that, I have that available here in hard copy. It was submitted with the evidence to the court, so you can look up the court document as well, and, uh, it'll show all the evidence that I've supplied. There is also a question of residency. So a rental property, not somebody that lives in a rental property, but a property that you use to collect rent from, a rental property, that cannot be used as your primary residence in the city of Warren. It's not your primary residence. You're, you're using it as a business. You're using it to make a profit. You're using it as a source of income. Public record search of the defendant appellate, uh, Brittany Nicole Tringali, provides the prop- the primary homestead property tax for a rental property with an address of eighty-two, twenty-two Stanley Drive, Warren, in McComb County, Michigan, four, eight, zero, nine, three, from October of two thousand twenty to current, for a Melissa McKenzie and a Michael McKenzie. Public record search provides for an out-of-state residency, though, at nine fifty Bob Arnold Boulevard, Lithia Springs, Douglas County, Georgia, thirty-one, two, two, from January of two thousand twenty-one. Well, geez, um, if you live there in October of two thousand twenty, how can you also live in Georgia at the same time, uh, January of two thousand twenty-one? Somebody's not telling the truth somewhere. So if that is the case, and the actual residency shows from January of two thousand twenty-one, there would have not been two years of residency within the city of Warren. Furthermore, her voting records indicate that she lives in District Two, Ward Two, for the voting records. So in this last election, did Ms. Brittany vote in District Two, or did she vote in District Five? That's another question. And I know that to be current, because the voting record was updated to notate the change between the tenth congressional district and the ninth congressional district. Everybody knows that we went through redistricting here in the state of Michigan, and this area used to be the ninth congressional district under Andy Levin, and now, since the redistricting, it's changed to the tenth congressional district, and John James is the new congressperson. So that means that her voting records were updated to indicate the tenth congressional district from voterrecords.com, and indicates her address in being in, uh, District Two, Ward Two, as of two thousand seventeen. I also want to go on here to an item that's very disturbing. On Tuesday, the eighth of August, two thousand twenty-three, Brighter Pack, Brighter Michigan Pack, Chairman Erica Stiglia and the chairman of the, quote, Republican Party of McComb County, text messages voters, uh, stating the following, quote, "Today is primary election day in Warren, and it is vital that conservatives have their voices heard. There are candidates to support, George Demus for mayor, Dave Dwyer, and Donna Kuhmartin, Council-at-Large, Adam Swaka, Council District Two, Dan Bozette, Council District Three, Gary Boyke, Council District Four, and Brittany Tringali, Council District Five. Polls are open until eight P.M. Get out and vote." Paid for Brighter Michigan Pack, and then their website. So the Republican Party is the party of Trump. President Trump does not endorse any candidate having to do with drugs in any way, shape, or form. Marijuana medical, marijuana recreational. Marijuana medical, marijuana recreational, psychedelic mushrooms, any of that, none of it. The party of Trump also does not endorse prostitution in any way, shape, or form. And the party of Trump also does not endorse any beating up on any police officer whatsoever, any assaulting, battering, resisting, obstructing, especially with a weapon? No, absolutely not. So there's no way that this individual is a conservative, and Erica Stiglia represents the never-Trumper, Rhino establishment class of the Republican Party. That is not a conservative, but I'll go into that more later. And finally, we have candidate J. Michael Jackson. He signed the same statement of adestation, meaning a false claim that he was eligible and qualified for this election. Well, let's go into why he's not eligible. Everybody should know in the city of Warren that J. Michael Jackson is on the Warren Crime Commission. He is a city officer. He serves as the Sergeant of Arms for that commission. He never resigned from that commission prior to running for this election. Now, I will go into why that's important later. J. Michael Jackson also has city employment. You cannot be employed by the city at the time that you file for election. There's a conflict of interest for obvious reasons. He serves as a police chaplain, so he's employed by the police department. So you got two gigs against you, and it specifically says that in the charter. Didn't read the charter. 4.3, certain persons ineligible for city office, indicates on there, cannot be a city officer, cannot have city employment to be eligible for office. Now, I said I was going to go into why is that important? Well, in the last council election that took place approximately four years ago, there was a candidate that served on the planning commission. This candidate stepped down from his position to be a write-in candidate to go against another candidate in District Four. When he did not obtain that position in the election as a write-in candidate, he was then allowed to go back onto his position on the planning commission. That is the proper way to run for office. You resign from your position on a board or a commission, and then if you do not obtain that position through the election, you can go back to that position, provided, in this case, the mayor would have to reappoint you into that position. And that's exactly what happened. Now, that individual no longer serves on the board or commission, and he's, to my knowledge, he's no longer in the city of Warren due to employment reasons. But that's the way it should have been done. So J. Michael Jackson did not step down from the Warren Crime Commission, and he also did not step down from being a police chaplain in the city of Warren, which would be city employment, which is prohibited under the charter. So let's get into the nature of this action. This action is brought pursuant to MCL 125.542, seeking writ of superintending control to the City of Warren Election Commission to A, ordering them to remove candidate Henry Noonan, candidate Brittany Tringali, and candidate J. Michael Jackson as all ineligible and unqualified from the votes cast on Tuesday, 8 August, 2023, primary election ballot results in the city of Warren, and B, ordering defendant appellies City of Warren Election Commission to certify that plaintiff appellant Eddie Kabasinski as the only remaining candidate that is eligible and qualified per the City Charter of Warren, Chapter Four, Officers, Section 4.2, eligibility for city office, general qualifications, page 19, and Section 4.3 A and B, certain persons ineligible for city office, page 19, for the council in the fifth district in the city of Warren. Again, this is having to do with eligibility and qualified per the City Charter, our Bible, our Constitution, not for any other reason. We're not saying that these individuals are bad people. We're not trying to say that they're anything else other than ineligible and unqualified to have been on this ballot and to hold elected office in the city of Warren. Now, they may be able to run for a different position, maybe county commissioner, maybe state representative, state senator. I hear that there's not too many qualifications required to run for governor, for Secretary of State, or for Attorney General, so could run for those positions, too. Under MCR 3.302, this court, meaning the circuit court, has the power to issue writs of superintending control over the lower courts of those courts or tribunals that are violating clear legal duties, which I provided per the charter that they had a legal duty, shall, they did not do it, and if the plaintiff-appellants have no adequate legal remedies other than the writs sought. Through the City of Warren clerk and City of Warren Election Commission have violated to satisfy the conditions of their duties in the City of Warren Charter, they have deprived the plaintiff-appellant of my due process and liberty, which is provided under the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution. Unfortunately, I didn't put that on there as a, what was it called again? Index of authorities, the Fourth Amendment, but I do have it in here within the text, so hopefully that'll be considered by Judge Burnett. They have violated the City Charter of Warren, and penalties are provided within Section 2.6, page 11. So here are the arguments. The criminal election fraud has been perpetrated upon the good and decent people of the Fifth Council District for the city of Warren by having ineligible and unqualified candidates voted upon. The primary ballot has been allowed to take place. The city of Warren provides for the duties of the city clerk, shall be the chief election officer of the city. The city of Warren clerk shall perform all duties required by law and by the ordinances of the city. The clerk shall serve as chairman of this commission. A city election commission consisting of the clerk, city attorney, and the city assessor is hereby created. City of Warren Election Commission, general powers and duties, the election commission shall, again, shall have the power, and it shall be its duty to make complaint and to prosecute any person whom the commission shall have good cause to believe guilty of violation of election laws. Well, here's your exhibits right here. Here's your proof. I provided it. It was ignored. And the city assessor, city attorney, the clerk, and the evidence intake officer, attorney Mary Michaels, has a copy of this. For them to say they don't know what it means, they don't know what it says, it's not subject to interpretation. State Election Commission, State Board of Canisters, has made it very clear, you have to read the plain language. You have to read the plain language. The plain language is very clear here, and they ignored it. The next argument is the plaintiff-appellant was not afforded legal opportunity for a public hearing concerning the candidate challenges in order for defendant appellies City of Warren clerk and City of Warren Election Commission to take action upon plaintiff appellies timely, lawfully submitted, supplied corresponding evidence obtained by the plaintiff appellant and independently obtained and verified from an online private investigation firm, checkpeople.com, that conducts background checks and utilizing criminal and public record database sources. Next argument is, on Friday, the 5th of May, 2023, when the plaintiff-appellant timely and lawfully submitted the ineligible and qualified candidate challenges officially in writing to the Fifth District Council Election Ballot in the city of Warren prior to the May 8th, May 2023 deadline, and submitted the supplied corresponding evidence obtained by the independently obtained and verified online private investigation firm, checkpeople.com, that conducts these background checks utilizing the criminal and public record database sources, the defendant appellies City of Warren clerk and City of Warren Election Commission took no action against candidates Henry Noonan, candidate Brittany Tringali, and candidate J. Michael Jackson as all ineligible and unqualified on the Tuesday, 8 August, 2023, primary election ballot in the city of Warren. Candidate Henry Loring Noonan is ineligible and unqualified for the Fifth Council District in the city of Warren, per the City Charter, is currently a school district officer for the city of Centerline School Board, and has not resigned from that city office prior to filing for elected city office. Public record search also provides that the primary homestead property tax is for an address of 1128 North Blair Avenue, Royal Oak, Oakland County, Michigan, 48067, as a current residency, and at the 27156 Scale Drive, Warren, Macomb County, Michigan, 48093 address, was a personal asset that was sold for $93,100, and that residency ceased on the 6th of April, 2023, Thursday. So he signed his statement of adestation and received a filing on the 24th of March, 2023, and then sold the house on the 6th of April, which is approximately two weeks later. And you didn't think anybody was going to check? Just like this council majority, they underestimated me. Let's go back to Ms. Tringali here. She is ineligible and unqualified for the Fifth Council District Office in the city of Warren, per the City Charter, is a multiple convicted felon since 2017 in the state of Michigan. And a public record search provides for felony criminal convictions in the state of Michigan under the alias of Brittany Kilimzak for felony assaulting, resisting, obstructing a police officer with a weapon attempt on the 9th of February, 2017, felony retail fraud, second degree, over $200 on 24th of January, 2017, and for MCL 333.7214 narcotic drugs, public health code, act 368 of 1978, and MCL 750.448 through MCL 750.449A prostitution in the city of Detroit, Wayne County, third judicial court cases. I'm not going to reread that. She also indicates, again, that her primary residence is on Stanley Drive, which is legally shown to be under the ownership or occupancy of the Mackenzies, and that the private investigation firm shows that she actually had now-of-state residency since January of 2021. So if she does live in the city of Warren now, well, when exactly did she leave Georgia? I mean, you know, what's going on here? The defendant appellate candidate Brittany Tringali was not officially endorsed Republican candidate per the official Macomb County Republican Party, or by Chairman Mark Forton, or by the Michigan Republican Party Chairwoman Christina Kiramo, but yet, election interference and voter intimidation was allowed to occur by Brighter Michigan PAC at the direction of Chairman Erica Stiglia at the voting precinct polling locations in the Fifth Council District for the city of Warren. On Friday, the 5th of August, 2022, in the county of Macomb 16th Judicial Circuit Court, Judge Matthew P. Sawbaugh ruled in case number 2022 hyphen 001953 dash NZ that the Trump conservative patriot, Macomb County Republican Party, and Chairman Mark Forten are the true county party, and that Erica Stiglia is not the true county party chairman, and that the Never Trump Rhino Establishment, quote, Republican Party, Macomb County, is not the true county party. Therefore, Erica Stiglia had no authorization from the true Trump conservative patriot, Macomb County Republican Party, or the Trump Michigan Republican Party to interfere with this election or intimidate voters with an endorsement of candidates to support through the Never Trump Rhino Establishment, Brighter Michigan PAC, and defendant appellate candidate Brittany Tringali was not officially endorsed Republican candidate. Plaintiff-appellant is the only officially endorsed Republican Party candidate for the Fifth Council District in the city of Warren. In conclusion, our election process is predicated upon the voting constituents having eligible and qualified candidates voted upon their election ballot. The plaintiff-appellant believes that having free and fraudulent fair election process leads to a more freedom and justice process, and to a more safe and secure election process, not less. The United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, states, quote, "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government," end quote. The United States of America was never meant to be a democracy based on democratic policies and rules by Democrats by law. The founding fathers did everything that they could to keep us from having a democracy. James Madison, rightly known as the father of the Constitution, wrote in essay number 10 of the Federalist Papers, quote, "Democracies have never been spectacles of turbulence and contention, have never been found incompatible with personal security or the rights of property, and have in general been in short in their lives as they have been violent in their deaths," end quote. Alexander Hamilton agreed, and he stated, quote, "We are a republican government. Real liberty is never found in despotism or in the extremes of democracy," end quote. John Adams, a signer of the Declaration of Independence, stated, quote, "Democracy never lasts long. It soon wastes, exhausts, and murders itself," end quote. Founding fathers had good reason to look upon democracy with contempt. There is no better election process in the world. Again, the United States of America was never meant to be a democracy based on democratic policies and rules by Democrats by law without the protections of the defendant appellies City of Warren clerk and City of Warren Election Commission to take action upon timely and lawfully submitted, supplied corresponding evidence obtained by myself and the independently obtained and verified information from the online private investigation firm, checkpeople.com, that conducts the background checks utilizing the criminal and public record database sources, allowed the criminal election fraud that has been perpetrated upon the good and decent people of the Fifth Council District for the city of Warren by having ineligible and unqualified candidates voted upon in the primary election ballot. The defendant appellies City of Warren Election Commission should have certified that plaintiff-appellant Eddie Kabasinski has the only remaining candidate that is eligible and qualified for the City Charter of Warren, Chapter Four, Officers, Section 4.2, eligibility for city office, general qualifications, page 19, and Section 4.3 A and B, certain persons ineligible for city offices, page 19, for the council in the fifth district in the city of Warren. For all these reasons stated above, the defendant appellants violated City Charter of Warren election laws, and the primary election results must be corrected based upon criminal election fraud that has been perpetrated upon the good and decent people in the Fifth Council District for the city of Warren by having ineligible and unqualified candidates voted upon in the primary election ballot has been allowed to take place. The relief sought request here, defendant appellies City of Warren clerk and City of Warren Election Commission ignored the City Charter of Warren precedent and failed to address the numerous significant deficiencies raised by myself. I am respectfully requesting the Honorable Court to grant my appeal for damages, superintending control order, and injunctive relief, to order defendant appellies City of Warren clerk and City of Warren Election Commission to remove candidates Henry Noonan, candidate Brittany Tringali, and candidate J. Michael Jackson as all ineligible and unqualified from the votes cast on Tuesday, 8 August, 2023, on the primary election ballot in the city of Warren. Order of the defendant appellies City of Warren Election Commission to certify that plaintiff-appellant Eddie Kabasinski is the only remaining candidate that is eligible and qualified per the City Charter of Warren for the Fifth Council District in the city of Warren based upon the above allegations. Plaintiff-appellant respectfully requests this Honorable Court to grant punitive damages. These damages should compensate myself for the interest and other costs flowing from the defendant appellies conduct, and should include damages for duress and the intentional and/or negligent infliction of emotional distress caused to myself by violations of the City Charter in this election process. This has been a very stressful This has been a very stressful process for me. My signs have been damaged, destroyed, stolen. There have been members of the administration in the city of Warren that have actively been involved in damaging, destroying, and removing my campaign signs. This has happened most recently. On privately owned property, these are my private property signs that were purchased as a result of donations and endorsements. And these individuals worked very hard for their money so that they could support a candidate they believe in in the South End of Warren. As it stands right now, if these election results stand, we will not have any elective representation south of 696, which is what everybody in the city of Warren in the South End feared would happen by this redistricting. Well, it's come to fruition. So where do they get the authority to remove my campaign materials? Where do they get the authority to stifle free speech? There was a 2015 ruling that was done involving a case Reed versus Town of Gilbert, and I'm not going to go into detail about that case, but pretty much says that protective political speech, can't do anything about it. If you don't like it, don't look at it, don't listen to it, but you can't do anything to stop it. And that's what's happened here in the city of Warren. We have people that are intolerant. They don't like something they see, they don't like something they hear, that evidently gives them the right to go out and damage and destroy private property, remove it unlawfully. I got told recently, here in the city of Warren, we don't have to listen to Supreme Court rulings. Unless we hear a county or a state ruling, we're not going to follow it. We don't have to follow federal law, okay? They must have not read Article 6 of our Constitution's supremacy clause. I have respectfully requested the Court to grant the following relief. Award plaintiff damages in the excess of $135,638.64, the equivalent to the amount of the four-year term of office, the forthcoming four-year term of office in the city of Warren Council. I was the only eligible and qualified candidate on this ballot. So if they want to not negate the votes that were fraudulently cast, and they want to have either Mr. Noonan, Ms. Brittany, or Mr. Jackson as the winner on this fraudulent election ballot, okay, fine. But you're going to pay me what I should have been paid, and then I'll move on to another elected office. And in that elected office, I'll see what I can do about this fraud that was perpetrated upon the fifth district, because that should never happen in our elections. Award to plaintiff appellant costs in bringing this action, including all reasonable fees. So right now, it's cost me approximately $175 to file this here in the circuit court once it was removed from the district court. And then I had to pay for service for every one of the defendants, including the two addresses for Mr. Noonan, the old one and the new one. And I should say, too, if he signs the restricted delivery on Blair, oh, boy, Mr. Noonan, that proves you live there, doesn't it? So it's been costly to file this here. I'm not a wealthy or rich man by any means at all. There's probably people in this room that make a hell of a lot more money than I do. I'm also asking the Court to find a civil fine of $10,000 for each violation of MCL 750.505, Public Act 328 of 1931, misconduct in office by a public officer, punishment for indictable common law offense, malfeasance, misfeasance, and nonfeasance that is determined to be persistent and knowing. That particularly applies to Ms. Bufo. It is painfully clear to see in the charter that Ms. Bufo had a plenary power duty, and she said she was going to use discretion and not do the duty of shall. Twice noted in the charter, shall. Civil fine of $1,000 for each violation of the signed statement of attestation concerning section 3 Certification and Acknowledgement in the affidavit of identity and receipt of filing that is determined to be persistent and knowing. So that applies to each one of the council candidates that knew prior to their filing that they were ineligible and not qualified to be on this ballot. It also applies to the election law violation of Ms. Bufo. And a civil fine of $500 for each violation of the city charter, section 2.6, penalties for violation of the charter that has been determined to be persistent and knowing. So I guess that would apply to members of the election commission as well. They knew they had a duty. Even if Ms. Bufo had made a determination, they still had two votes. They should have said something, they should have told her, you have a duty to do your job, and you didn't do it. So I guess that would apply to them as well. And award such other relief as this Honorable Court deemed just and appropriate. So I filed this here on Friday, the 18th of August, 2023. It does, it is within the word count that is necessary for the appellate briefs of only 6,029 words. And it took me about a week to do. And I'm very concerned about what has happened in our elections. Having been prior law enforcement has prepared me to do this brief and other briefs that I've had to do recently, working, having worked in the Army Criminal Investigation Division, used to have to prepare these cases for the JAG Corps. That was one of your responsibilities as being a detective, and that training in the military has prepared me to do this here. If I didn't have that background and training in working in military law enforcement corps, or even in civilian law enforcement at the civilian level or at the federal level, I probably wouldn't have not been able to do this. But those knowledge, skills, and ability helped me get through this process. So that's, that's pretty much it. And I wish something would be done about the First Amendment free political speech violations that seem to be persistent and knowing that are ongoing here in the state of Michigan, in every county, with any candidate that happens to be a Republican, whatever side of the Republican Party you are, that this is continuing to happen with our political free speech signs. And you can't even hold rallies without being prosecuted. So my signs are being told they have to come down. I left my signs up and said, I want people to know that I'm still fighting this. Hopefully, this press release conference will get out to the public. It is my intent to let everybody know that I am not conceding this election. I am very much still a candidate for the fifth district council seat, irregardless of what Mr. Forlini, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Lucido, or Mr. Wickersham seem to do with these criminal cases that I've also filed in regards to what happened in this election, which they've taken no action on whatsoever. So I think there's questions that have to be asked about that as well. Thank you. I'll take any questions if there are now.
Has this hearing date been set?
No, there has not. It goes before Judge, which I found out recently, he's the chief circuit judge in the 16th Judicial District. His name is Judge James Aim, Judge M. Bynat, B.I.E.R.N.A.T. Jr. It's my understanding he's supposed to be retiring this year? Is that correct?
I can't say that for sure.
Okay. There was rumor that he might be retiring this year. Any other questions, concerns? So as far as I'm concerned, this is a prima facie case. I've been able to prove motive, opportunity, and ability for each one of these individuals to do exactly what they've done. And nothing's being done about it. That's my sincere hope that there would be something done about this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie. Fighting for all of us. Absolutely.
And this is Fred Niestat here for Epic Times viewers. Fred here is a candidate to be a trustee in the township of Clinton, and they recently made sure at a trustee meeting that they wouldn't have a quorum so that Fred could get appointed to be put on to be a trustee for Joy West, who stepped down. And they're purposely not holding a quorum so they don't have to put a trustee up there. And it looks like they're trying to make this go to a general election instead of appointing a conservative, a pro-Trump supporter to be on the Board of Trustees.
There are 17 candidates that applied, many more than was thought. So it's very telling that the three Democrat members of the Clinton Township Board refused to show for the meeting that would allow the candidates to state their case for being qualified. So they worked very hard a couple of weeks prior to Tuesday, just, or Monday, so that they would have a rule change that would focus the attention on applying for the job rather than electing. So why is it that a board in Clinton Township would want to have a selection instead of an election? One possible reason could be that they don't want to have a full contingent of four trustees. Now, that seems reasonable. But if that were true, why did they fail to show up for the hearing that would allow the candidates to state their case? I don't know what their intentions are. We will find out. There will be a chance for them to vote August 28th. Thank you.
Have a temporary position, all right?
Yeah, one year, right.
Any other questions, concerns? No? Not one question? Oh, okay.
Eddie, you said it pretty well.
Okay.
Very thoroughly. Thank you.
All good, ma'am? In the back?
You'd be good to that position, because I looked at the qualifications, and I was like, no. Interpreting the law and stuff, I don't get that. Thank you. You're very good.
Yeah, I'm not a professional politician. I'm just a...
I'm surprised.
I'm of that.
We need you on the school board. These guys are crazy at this.
No questions, Ms. Miley? Not one?
I have talked a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I've talked a lot, so, you know. Prior to this, we talked, and, yeah, yeah.
So it's all there?
Yeah, yeah.
So we need to know what's the next file. Court does have the case on the electronic document.